All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 2024 zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Carmel. Board members' names are in front of you on the dais. We have town council this evening with us, Joe Charbonneau, representing. The way we operate is I'll ask you to come up. You folks in the back, if you're getting sunblinded, you can shut those blinds, right? If you guys are getting killed over there. So I'll ask you to come up. I'll swear you in. We can hear your case. I'll poll the board for any questions or comments, and I'll open it up to the public at that point. You know, when you guys address the board, just address the board. Don't address each other if there's any conflicts. And we'll adjudicate at the end. When we close the hearing, there's no further input from the public on any application, so please bear that in mind. I would like to recognize Mr. Phil Aglietti for his many years of service and his knowledge and expertise in the realm of legalities and real estate law. He's going to be missed. This is his last meeting, and he will be sorely missed with his expertise. And we want to thank you, Phil, for all your help. And the town recognizes you, and we appreciate everything you've done for us.
I appreciate everyone here. I appreciate my fellow board members and everyone out there. I faked this for 12 years. So...
You did a damn good job.
I'll give someone else a good shot to give it...
So...
Apply for it, please.
Thank you, Phil. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
On that note, we all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I mentioned earlier before the meeting started that applications number one and two had requested a holdover since we're down two board members, and soon enough we'll be down another one after this gentleman leaves us. So application number one, TTS HR LLC, I'll look for a motion to carry over.
Motion, hold it over?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then application number two for Anthony Nanetti, I'll look for a motion.
Motion, hold it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So if anyone's here for those two cases, it's going to be held over. Thank you. All right. Holdover application number three is for Anthony Canariato for variation of section 156-15, seeking an area variance for permission to construct addition. The property is located 77 Blumer Road, Mahopac, New York, tax map 75.2-1-40. The code requires or allows 20-foot side garage, 17 feet provided, and a variance of three feet is being sought. Last month, it was picked up that there was a deck built to the pool, so that had to be covered. That's why this was held over. And that side setback is 15 feet. What's provided now is eight feet, so a variance of seven feet is required. Good evening.
Anthony Canariato, 77 Blumer Road.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right. Bring us through quickly what you discovered, well, we discovered last month with...
Well, we went over to do the measurements.
Just speaking to the microphone.
We went over to the measurements for the, now for the pool setback. I checked everything over again and realized that the garage was actually measured from the wrong spot. So we only need a variance of three feet instead of seven.
Oh, so it's much less now than what it was.
It's actually less, four feet less than what I actually need to cover the, to get into the 20-foot requirement. So...
Just excuse me one second. Are you guys here to listen to any cases?
Just to listen in.
Which ones? Because the first two...
About only for shed runs and stuff.
Okay. Okay. Not the first two applications. Okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
And then we did the, we measured for the pool, which is, as you know, we have eight, we need seven. You guys have pictures of all the different angles of where the pool sits?
Yep. You didn't realize you needed a permit for the deck? Assumingly, right?
Yeah.
So how long has it been there for?
We've had the, we had, this is our second pool, actually. We had a round, an 18-round, and then we, when we tree hit it right after COVID, like the year after, so the only thing we get was a same width, but just a longer, an oval pool. So the deck and the, the pool is, well, the two pools, I guess total is like, I guess, 10 years now, and the deck is probably five or six.
Okay. There's no property you can buy to bring it into conformance. Obviously, you're landlocked there. I think we asked that question last month as well. So I don't remember, what was the old number? That the variance, first variance?
Oh, it was seven. I needed seven feet to bring it into, I had 13, I need seven.
So it's a lot...
Yeah.
Considerably a lot less than what's being sought. All right. Board members, any comments or questions?
This is the rendering. It's gonna, you're gonna pull in from the side now?
It was the same one as it was. The...
You're pulling into the garage from the side, not from the front?
Oh, no, no, from the front. No, that's, that's the, that's the original, if you go to the next plan. That's the original, what our garage looks like now.
Okay.
On the side. And then we're adding the one-car garage.
Oh, it's just the one car?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Just the one car.
Oh, I thought you were doing two-car.
No. It's just gonna go one car. You'll pull into it, and then the, those doors, the two door, the two doors on the side will be closed off as a wall, and then that'll close off that room.
Okay. And from what I can tell from your, the survey, it looks like the pool is closer to the property line than the deck is. Is that correct?
Yes. The deck is actually, I think it's like over 20 feet, whatever it is. Like, it's not...
From the property line?
Yeah, the deck is actually, the deck is put, is closer to my house, which is, if you look at the house, it's like a pizza pie. It's closer towards the, like, the middle part with the crust, whatever.
So the pool is more...
It's the pool, yeah. The pool is where the issue is, that, that, that one corner of the pool.
Okay. No other questions?
No questions. Thank you. Silvio?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
All right. Any input from the public on this application? Sir? Just if anyone comes up to speak, please make sure you write your name, address, and contact information, phone number, email, on the form on the dais, please.
You have to rest or...
You can do it afterwards. All right. State your name and address.
Vincent Perillo, 5 Carriage Court.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Just go, I guess it's a twofold thing with the garage and the pool.
Just remind you to speak into the mic.
I have the house next to Anthony. First of all, I just want to ask, what is the reason for having a 20-foot setback or 15-foot setback?
What's the reason?
Yeah.
So that people don't build up to the property line, or, you know, this was created by the forefathers and the framers back in the day. You know, every town just about has the same, similar codes and adopted differently. Yeah.
Okay. And, yeah, because I'm glad that it's only three feet now instead of the seven feet. I had went to Mike, and I said, I still can't see how it's only going to be three feet that they need. I said, can you just come out, and along with the contractor and Anthony, just put a mark where the corner of the garage is going to be? I was told no by Mike. And I said, why can't you come out? And he's like, oh, you know, look at the survey or look, I go, I don't think it's correct. I go, I said, okay. I said, now what if they do start construction, and it turns out to be that it's way more than the three feet? He goes, well, we'll, we'll close, we'll stop the job.
Shut them.
So I said, okay, then they're gonna stop the job. You come for another variance, it'll get approved, and you're not gonna say take down the, the structure. And it's just, I don't know why there isn't something beforehand to say, hey, here's where the marking gonna be. Everybody cool with it? You're good, all right? And everything's fine. It's the way it should be, as a neighbor and as a town to say, hey...
I don't know about other towns, but in my experience, I've been in construction my whole life. I've never known a building department to come out and do that as a courtesy or a request.
To measure. I mean, it saves everybody time. And I mean, that's, that's the thing, you know? But, okay. And then, you know, one of the things was, is that you said if there's an alternative, and they have plenty of alternatives, because they have a lot of property going from the front of the house and everything, and if they caddy, if in the caddy corner, if they split the new room, the old garage, the two-car garage they had, and came out towards the front, you would still have plenty of room for that garage, and they would not need the space. So...
Well, you gotta think about the feasibility of it. Where the garage is now, they're bringing the garage out, right? So that area can't be used.
No, but he could, behind the half of that...
You can't put a garage on either side, and you don't have a driveway on the other side.
Behind the half of that garage could be his room, the mudroom and all that, what he wants, and then it just starts up further. It's just, he's going all the way out when he can come up.
I mean, unfortunately, you're, you're part of a cul-de-sac, and there's only so much that he can do with what houses is existing there.
Oh, that's not, I mean, then he should have bought a bigger house. You know, you wanted, you're infringing on...
You gotta live within your means.
I bought the house to have that space.
I know I do.
What?
You gotta live within your means of what you can afford. So I don't know what his financial situation is. Maybe he can't afford it.
Exactly. But you, it's always, when you grant the variance...
Do you have children?
What?
You have children?
Yes, I do.
Did you, how many kids you have? You have a lot of kids? So did you have enough space in your house?
I had enough space.
So he's got a growing family, is what he explained last time, so...
Well, again, his house is small for four kids, but I'm just saying, that shouldn't be a reason why the property gets infringed upon when you have an alternative. I mean, that's, that's the...
In your opinion?
An area variance has five different criteria.
I know.
The alter, having an alternate means of doing it is just one thing. The other issues that you're, the proposed...
What are the five, just so I know?
Well, an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties be created by granting the variance. Three feet, I don't think it's gonna...
Okay. And if it's not three feet, and the job's stopped, and it ends up being 10 feet, still okay?
Well, I mean, I was there, I've been there three times now.
Okay.
Because I knew that you were sensitive to this.
Yeah.
And I went there today, and I noticed he has three cars in his driveway.
Yeah.
I can't imagine this garage being more than two of those cars.
Well, exactly. So do you know how far I'm off the corner of his driveway, my property?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's 17 feet off of your property line.
No, 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 no. Do you know where my prop, the property line ends to the, to the corner of his driveway, to the left of his driveway, looking at his driveway?
Yeah.
I'm one foot eight inches. That's where my property ends.
I, I'm sorry. I don't understand what you're saying.
Grab the hand mic, please. We'll use that. Sorry. A nice train between them, too. You gotta get the mic.
He has three cars parked right there.
Just gotta speak into the mic.
Yeah, use mine.
Does this mean we're recording?
So as you see, this is the property line to here. Yeah, so he has a car over here. It's, it's not gonna be three feet. It's gonna be at least 15 feet.
He only has a one-car garage, though, that he's putting in?
No, I know. But he's, his is, his is old garage, and he's coming out with a one garage into the driveway. So that, into the driveway, it's, it's, it's gonna be at least...
But it's not changing the footprint of his driveway now, so it's not gonna be encumbering any further than what you have there existing today.
No, no, I know that. But he's not, he's not gonna be within...
Sir, here's the deal. All right, I'll, I'll make it simple. If it goes more than three feet, he's going to get cited. It does come back to the board, and then self-creation comes into play.
You're being incumbent on him to make sure it's right, because then he's not gonna wanna waste his time and money redoing it.
And then the variance game changes once that happens, if he doesn't agree to the variance, because then self-creation becomes a factor here. Okay, so...
I understand, and it's not your job to...
No, our job is to...
Get in between neighbors and say that, but I'm just saying, as a courtesy, just say, hey, this is what I think I'm doing. I just want to be some...
Are you friends? Would you meet with him and let him show you where it's gonna go? That makes the most sense.
Of course, of course.
There's your answer.
Of course. I mean, so...
All right. Anybody else wish to speak on this application?
Well, I'm still not done. I wanna talk about the pool.
Oh, you still have more? Okay.
Yeah. The pool. Anthony gave you the history of the pool. They had a 15-foot pool. Tree fell down. Instead of rebuilding the same pool, yes, he's the same width as it, as it goes out, though. He put a 33-foot pool to go to angle more towards my house. When it first got built, I was like, wow, that's pretty close, because back of my house, we have a deck. Used to just look at trees or whatever and everything, and then now you see the whole pool. And it's a joke with us, too, sometimes, because I have friends over. They'll say, oh, you got a nice pool. I said, it's not my pool. So that's, it's very close. So he's asking for almost half of what the spot is needed. And again, like I said last time, no variance was ever asked for last time, and Mike came out, and it should have been done. When I asked, how far did it have to be off? 10 feet. I said, okay, now it's 50 feet. Doesn't sound like a lot of five feet, but in that small area it is. And who knows if he would have got the variance then, or said, hey, put a smaller pool. But now that the pool is up, of course, you're not gonna say, take it down. So...
There's been instances where we were, where, where it made sense, where we've taken, had people remove a whole house. We have one case where a guy had built the house, he had to move, knock the whole thing down and move it over three, four feet, because he just nefariously built it without any regard to anybody.
So, I mean, it just, that it's asking for all...
But you have to keep in mind, people come here to seek relief, not to, you know, set standards and whatnot.
Okay. And again, they shouldn't, you know, you're not getting involved in what they do. But I think in both cases, he's asked for compromise. You guys and the ladies have compromised. I'm compromising where it's coming closer to my property, which is a right, and they're not compromising. So what I'm asking the board is, and all I want, is maybe put up 12-foot arbivides or something lining where the pool is to, so that I don't have to see it as a taxpayer. And he's, he's infringing, so, you know, like, again, he's compromi, you're compromising, I'm compromising, and he's not compromising. So I think that's a fair thing to say, put up 10, 12-foot arbivides, line the area, so we don't have to look at the pool. That is not, I must say, it's not legal.
And the pool's been there 10 years? You've never had an issue with it for 10 years until now?
He didn't have, he didn't have this bigger pool up for 10 years.
Okay.
Okay? And now this...
Oh, he just said five years or six years it was replaced? Still, that's a pretty long time.
I don't think it was six years. I don't think it was six years. And...
Oh, after COVID, all right.
The thing is, if you, you know, shame on me once, shame twice, you know, you know, that's, that's something. So now it's like a repetitive thing, where infringing, infringing. So now I'm just, you know, as a courtesy, as a neighbor, he should have come over and said, hey, I know I'm in your backyard. Let me put up some bushes. That didn't happen. So I'm asking the town, as a compromise for what he's trying to do. I'm not asking for a lot. It's just to have a little bit more privacy that we're losing because of their actions.
Honestly, I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah, I think that they can put some arbivide in.
Fence.
Some kind of, some kind of...
I mean, usually you put the arbivides, I heard you in another board meeting, it's like three foot on...
I don't know about 12 of them, but I think right within...
I mean, enough to cover.
I mean, it's your back deck, you said, is where you see them, right? So line from where your back deck is, the pool, would make sense?
That's his deck, right there. See?
This is a picture of the thing. Even the ball is on my property.
That's his deck. So he's got this view right here.
This is a picture from, from your...
You know?
So, you know, when they had...
Just speak into the mic, please.
When they had a smaller pool, you really didn't see it as much. But I mean, I can be inside my house, look out my sliding doors, and I see their pool. It's like, and I know it doesn't sound like a lot of five feet, but in that area, their property goes like this, and their pool doesn't come straight back. It goes angles towards my house. So again, that's, that's the thing. And it's, I'm not asking, I'm not here to bash his plans, or I'm just asking for...
I think he said the pool is 18 feet long?
33-foot long.
33-foot long?
Yes, yeah. So did you, I don't know if you saw the pool. So it's a long...
The pool itself is 33.
Yeah, 33. So they went from 15 to 33. So it's like, enough, you know? So it's like, now, just, I just wanna see, when I look out, that, that they put bushes across, you know? And, and that's it.
All right. Do you wanna submit those for the record? Do you have other copies?
No, you could take them. Which ones?
Yeah, we're gonna put them in the folder.
Take whatever you want. We'll take them all.
Take them all. I don't have anything. I don't think I have anything on the map.
What's the side dimension of your deck, Vincent? You know, when you look out from your house going out, what's, what's that dimension? How many feet does your deck go off your house?
I'd have to check. Just roughly.
I mean, it looks like it's about 15 feet to me.
Yeah, about 15, 16.
Yeah, so it would be like a 15-foot screen, you know? And, you know, you'd screen that off, you know? That's about...
I would actually plant them closer to the property line, to his property line, so they're mature enough.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, I'm sorry, I'm not saying, you know, going all the way up to the end of the property.
No. Just so when you're in your deck, you don't see it.
Just to cover the pool. It's privacy for them, it's privacy for us. It's, it's, you know, that's all I'm asking for. And, and again, I'm not here to squash his garage plans. He should have done that a long time ago. I just wish, maybe they constructed it a little differently, but that's his call and his contractor. But, you know, it's just all about having some fair...
All right, we'll take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to be heard on this application? Do you wanna come back up and... All right. So Anthony, it sounds like, you know, it sounds like a fair compromise. And what I'm reading here on the board, it sounds like it's something, look, in the grand scheme of the cost of your renovation, it's not, it's nickels on the dollar.
Just, just be in mind, his, where his deck is, it's raised higher, so it's gonna be, I mean, I don't know how big I need to get these at, but if they're, until they're about 20, 25 feet, he's still gonna be looking right into the pool or to the side.
Yeah, well, I think start the process and have them planted.
And when the deck, when the pool was round from his deck, you would still see the round part of the pool anyway. It's not like it was shielding. And I do have, where my deck is, we have three big, what are they called? Redwood pines. They're right there. So you don't even, you don't see the deck or anything like that, and you see, you miss, you lose part of the pool anyway, but I understand the edge of it. We're willing to, we talked about it. We said if we had to put some, but realistically, it's not, a 12-foot tree is just gonna basically come below their deck, so it's not gonna do anything. So if they're willing to wait for however it takes to grow or...
I'm looking at this picture. It might be, might be smarter to plant them closer to the pool. So it's actually covering any activity that's going on in the pool.
Yeah, just let me know.
Right? If they're at least eight feet, the pool's four feet, right? You're not gonna see too much going on there.
True.
Mine has four feet high, so...
Yeah, but still, as a higher angle, if the trees are closer to the pool, it's gonna cover any activity that's at the pool.
All right, so can you do arbivide to the end of the pool?
Yeah, I won't go, I don't wanna go too close to the pool, because then I'm gonna have everything in my pool. You know what I mean?
No, I totally agree with you.
Far enough, but close enough.
Yeah, okay.
You can do that?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll condition based on that. Is that all right?
Is there a, like a...
So I'd say, I'd say maybe eight is fair.
Specific distance or...
Six to eight footers?
Marker on the pool?
Yeah, height?
No, no, but wait, eight-foot height, but how many?
You're gonna need about, you're gonna need at least five, you know?
I'd say from the edge of the deck, right?
You put them three feet on center.
To the end of the pool.
Okay.
That, that's about 15 feet.
Deck to pool.
Gotcha. Okay, right there. Okay.
Just stretch across. You might wanna do more.
Okay.
Yeah.
At least five.
Yeah.
Good arbivide.
Over time, they'll grow into a hedge.
Okay.
You can do, you can scroll quick.
Yeah, they don't.
Eight feet tall or...
Eight feet.
Yeah, we'll go eight feet.
Three foot on center.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. All right. I think that's a fair compromise.
From the deck to the pool.
Okay, we'll adjudicate afterwards. At this point, I'm gonna close the public, you all right?
Motion, close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Our new application's tonight, number four, Marlena Mucci, for variation of section 156-15, seeking a variance for permission to add a deck to attach a pool and a pool deck to house deck. The property is located in the 100 Greenway Terrace South in Mahopac, New York, and is tax map 74.19-1-41. The code requires or allows 30 feet rear from the pool and the deck. What's provided is 24 feet. A variance required of six feet. 30-foot rear for the pool is required or allows, and what's provided is 22 feet, so a variance of eight feet is requested. And then the code requires 20-foot side, 15-foot is provided, so a five-foot variance is being sought. Good evening, folks. You both can speak.
Good evening.
Good evening. State your names and address for the record.
Marlena Mucci, 100 Greenway Terrace South, Maipac, New York.
Tony Petullo, 100 Greenway Terrace South.
Tony, you can lift that up. That's not too much on. You just speak clearly.
Otherwise, you're gonna be a hunchback.
No singing.
Yeah. Raise your right hands, guys. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, thank you. Bring us through your application. You guys didn't realize you needed permits?
Yes. Well...
Seems to be...
Yeah, seems to be the common theme to have to do.
Common theme.
Yes.
How long have they been there?
What's that?
The pool and the, well, the deck is existing on the pool now, right?
So the pool's been there, yes, since we purchased the property.
How long ago was that?
Uh, three years ago. Just this July 9th, three years.
Okay, I guess it never got picked up on title search?
What's that?
Title company, usually when you transfer owners, they research everything with municipalities to make sure you don't have any problems or permits and all that.
The pool? Oh, the pool is spot, no, the pool's permitted. There's no, there's no issue with the pool there.
But the deck?
The deck that's there now, we wanted to extend it, so with...
It sits away from the pool.
Oh, I thought there was a deck existing.
There is.
The house, if you want me to explain it since I...
No, the deck existing on the pool itself?
There is no deck existing on the pool. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He could speak.
So basically, it's an existing deck that comes out 25 feet by 16 feet, but it sits away three and a half feet away from the pool. I wanna make it safer, which I wanna put some footings, drop it like a stair, come around the pool and fence it.
Yeah, there's no enjoyment the way it is now. It's like you go out on the deck, and it's, you know, he fell off the ladder that we put in the pool.
I fell through the deck. The deck is the original deck since 96.
Yeah, so...
Okay. You talk to your neighbors on either side?
I'm very cool with everybody.
Any issues, concerns that they may have?
Absolutely not.
Not that we've ever known.
They could come over.
Neighbors with pools are good neighbors. Um...
Sometimes.
So, all right, there's no property you can buy, right? You're landlocked there. There's no property you can buy to bring it into conformance?
No, that's the thing. That's the toughest part of the property, is the way the backyard is. So there's, as you see, there's an easement that's there, so that's what's giving us the issue.
We don't have a backyard. It's more a front yard.
But are you, yeah, I was gonna say, there's no, she's got two fronts.
Yeah, two fronts. That's...
Yeah, I have a lot of...
Which, hold on a second. Why do we have a side yard variance here, then? Because you have no side yard. If you have two fronts, you have two rears. That's, that's not a rear.
No, that's, that's not a rear, that's...
Yes, it is, because it's a front of it, it has to be a rear.
On one side, it's really short, like... Because of the easement.
Okay, yeah, Mike came a lot of time, okay. So, are you encroaching on the easement, though? A little bit?
I think by a tiny bit. I know what I came...
When we do the step down, we just have to come three feet. So the, if, if the easement's five feet away, we're getting closer to like, not even three feet, 'cause just the footing has to go there, 'cause we have to come a step down from the pool.
But remember, it's not an ethical story. Each, each side, it's different, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's in there a little.
Yeah, that's why...
Can you build on an easement?
That's, that's my question.
Yeah, if you can build on it.
Is that easement from the subdivision? Do you know anything about that easement?
Drainage and utility.
So the drainage easement that's there is owned by NISEC, it's...
It's NISEC?
It is, but I've looked into it a multitude of times, and it's, I don't, I don't know what goes on there. I actually could have brought the entire easement that I have from when I bought the property. I don't, I could have brought, I didn't bring it with me. I didn't know that, you know, if that was needed.
What's the elevation at that easement of the stairs, you know? Is it at ground level at that point?
Yeah.
Is it like a footing that's there? I know, it's, see, it's squared off on your site plan, but is that at ground level?
Correct.
It is?
Yeah, I mean, there's such a slight inclines in the property.
'Cause that's gonna be a stair on an angle.
Exactly.
Yeah?
Oh, no, it's gonna come down, no, no, no.
Nothing's on an incline, Ed.
Every, it's, yeah, it's on the incline.
No. There's, the property's flat there.
We may wanna bring that number in, board somewhat, like, and keep it right at, at that line, 'cause right now you have fifteen feet, as was shown on the drawings, from what I could tell, um, which probably is about five feet from that easement line.
Right.
Yeah, to be quite honest, I don't have much experience in this, I just, you know, as...
No, but Joe, it could be muddy if, if they're building and it's over the easement line, right?
They may.
It all depends on the verbiage in the easement. I mean, if it's a NISEC easement, chances are it's not an issue, but if there's something else buried down there that they need to get to, that could be a big problem.
That could be a problem.
Yeah.
Right, 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 yeah, it's only, it's only owned by NISEC. I mean, that's something I could bring in, should...
Right, but just, just because NISEC owns easement doesn't mean it's only NISEC lines that are running through there.
Okay. How do I go about knowing that?
Well, I, my suggestion is, we could pass you tonight, probably, what I'm hearing, if we keep that number, right, this way you won't need that variance, right? Twenty-foot side, what's provided now is fifteen feet, right? This thing is existing, to a certain point, you might, I don't know if you're the builder or whoever, but they might have...
No, he's my fiancee.
Take that back, you know, to... Not that I was assuming, but I'm assuming you're building it yourself.
I wish he was my contractor, we'd save a lot more money.
It'd be cheaper, right?
Yeah.
So if we minimize that variance, that, that might help the situation.
You mean to shorten the deck?
Yeah.
I can't, then I, it's, it's, it wouldn't even be...
Or just the portion that is going over the easement, where you would just sort of jog it in...
I know, the thing is where it...
To the northeast.
Right, where it hits each part of the easement, it's like it's different angles.
Yeah.
So what's gonna happen is, you know, I've had the guys there, and we've been out there with tape measures, and, you know, I was out there saying, well, it's gotta come out more, you know, in order to have, you know, like a lounge chair and be able to have some type of...
We can't grant a variance on a property that's not yours.
Oh, no, 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 and that's fine, listen, if it can't be done, sadly to say, it can't be done.
I mean, the recommendation would be to actually clip that corner, you can make it like octagonal shape, right?
Are you guys gonna show me something and I could bring it back to them?
Well, I, I think, I mean, I don't have the dimensions here, unfortunately I have real small, we all have smaller sizes of this.
But what is the way to go about it where, I mean, is there things where people have done, where they've had variance done on an easement? No.
So you, you could probably contact NISEC, they have an entire legal easement department.
Okay.
And ask them what the nature of the easement is, and show them this, and ask them for a letter to give to the board...
Yeah, 'cause I know when I...
Demonstrating that it won't impact.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Okay, 'cause I know when I came to the, um, you know, earlier in the process, I know, you know, letters were going out to each individual person, and I know they were sent out to NISEC, so since I don't have much experience in this, I kinda thought I'm like, you know, it's like a, in the dark.
No, you have to force that conversation.
Okay, okay, so that's something I can do, yeah.
I think I have another issue, too.
Okay.
Um, do you have a garage on that right side that has black painted windows? Is that yours?
No. Oh, yes, off to the side.
Off to the side. It's not on this drawing.
It's on the other side, the...
Yeah, when was it put in?
The shed that's there?
It's not really a shed, it has garage doors. On the one side, there's a garage door.
No.
With the black painted window?
No.
The shed, it's up.
Oh, there's one shed, yeah, there's a garage door.
Yeah, it's correct.
But that's all on file, though.
That's what?
That's all, that's all on town file. When I purchased the home, that was the way it was there. I mean, from when I purchased it with my attorneys, everything there was like on the up and up, from, from the previous owner. I, I know what you mean, there's like, it's like another complete dwelling.
Yeah, it's very unsightly.
I know, trust me, I tell him all the time, I don't like it.
She wants you to knock it down.
I want you to knock it down, so honestly, it's really, I mean, windows that are, have black paint on them...
Listen, I have said if we could get something there that's nicer, what's, what's nice is for the storage, it's, it helps, but listen, when I bought the home, trust me, when I tell you, I have a lot of work that needs to get done there, kitchens, bathrooms, you know, little, little by little.
That looks like a garage door, though, that's facing...
It is, it is a garage door. It goes up and down?
It's not a shed. It's very long, I, I don't know what the dimensions are, but it's...
That's the way I bought the home, unfortunately. I, I don't know why it was ever, you know, okayed, I don't know.
Probably doesn't have variances, and it probably needs them, too.
Probably doesn't need it, it's not picked up here.
Yeah, everything, everything was on the survey when I purchased the property.
It may be, how big is the shed?
Uh, he could tell you maybe twenty...
I would say twenty-five feet by six feet wide.
Twenty-five feet.
Maybe a little longer than six feet wide. It does look like a trailer. She's absolutely correct.
She, it looks like a trailer. It really is...
Well, it's gotta be...
Is it fixed fifteen feet?
Completely unsightly.
Unsightly doesn't necessarily mean it's legal or not.
Yeah.
I don't think it's legal, though, I would, I would want Mike or somebody to go...
No, it's legal, it's legal. I have my title report at home, it's legal, trust me when I tell you.
It didn't find this.
Huh?
It didn't find the deck. The title report would have found the deck.
What didn't find the deck? My deck is on, my, excuse me, but my deck is completely on my title report, the deck that was there.
Sorry, I was thinking...
That's okay.
That's what I confused.
Yeah.
I would love to see somebody from the buildings department go out and look at that.
Yeah, that would be great. What, the, the shed that...
Well, it sounds like we're gonna have to put this over. My recommendation before that came up was to clip that corner and minimize not needing that variance.
Yeah, that's...
Could be an architectural element as well, but it sounds like we're gonna have to hold this over until you can find out about the shed. Unfortunately, Mike is not with us tonight, um, he's on vacation, that's all.
Yeah, I've dealt with him on several, I mean, I, not that I know him well, but I'm, I'm a local Realtor here in town, so I've been here a couple times, um, we've pulled my survey and...
So we're gonna ask you guys to look into that. In that time, try to find out about the information for, on the easement.
From NISEC? Okay, so that's something just...
If they respond to you that quickly.
Okay, so go there directly, you think? Like to NISEC in, in Brewster?
Mike may have a contact name for you, if you speak with him, he might have somebody. If not, he'll call me and I have somebody.
Okay, so when I leave here this evening, just get in contact with Mike tomorrow?
He's on vacation until next week?
Oh, he's away? Okay, okay, that's fine. Yeah, I'm not trying to rush it, I just wanna do it once, do it right, and, you know, just be done with it, yeah.
No, we didn't know this information. It should have been shown on your site plan or your survey as well, but it's not on.
Understood.
Yeah, the garage is not on there.
No.
Nope.
All right, um, I mean, while we have this case open, anybody wish to be heard on this application? Anyone here to, questions or comments? Okay, um, we're gonna hold this over.
Okay.
So we'll give you that time to research and find out about the shed as well.
Motion to hold over.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
You got it, thank you.
All right, application number five, Anthony Polcari, for variation of section one-five-six point fif, uh, dash fifteen, seeking variance to retain two existing sheds. Property is located at twenty Eminem Lane, Mahopac, and is tax map seventy-six point six dash one dash eighteen. Uh, the code requires or allows shed front on the coal drive side allows forty feet. What's provided is ten point two feet, so a variance of twenty-nine point eight feet is being sought. And on the Eminem side, the shed that's there is a side required of ten feet. What's provided is three point eight feet, so a variance of six point two feet is required. Good evening, guys. You both gonna be speaking?
No.
You doing all talking?
Uh, sometimes.
All right, state your name and address for the record.
Anthony Polcari, twenty Eminem Lane.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
All right, what's going on? How long these sheds been here?
About twenty-five years.
Okay, and it's never got picked up again on title search, or...
Nothing, well, I've been there for thirty-five.
Okay.
But I never realized that, back then, that they needed any of this.
Well, is this coming up now? Were you cited, or...
I don't know. I, yeah, I was cited from the town, they asked me to come up.
Dennis is doing his job very diligently.
And I'm trying to do the right job, so my kids don't have to deal with it.
Okay, so both sheds have been there for what?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. Is there any property you can buy to bring them into conformance?
Any, well...
Okay, that's a no, I guess?
No.
Talked to your neighbors?
Yep.
No issues?
No issues.
No concerns?
No concerns, that I've talked to every one of them that are right directly next to me, around me.
All right, yeah, I think you have the same issue with two, two frontages here.
Yeah, I got coal drive and, uh, Chrome Falls Road is a front, and then they consider Eminem Lane a front as well.
Coal drive side is screened well with trees, there's enough foliage back there to cover that one. And actually, the same case with the other one.
The other one you can't see.
So, John, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, it's a, it's an unusual arrangement with two fronts. They've been there for thirty-five years, they look decent, you know, they're maintained.
Thank you.
No questions.
No questions, thank you.
No questions, it's a very private area.
Yeah, so it's kinda, step back. All right, anybody in the public wish to comment on this application? I'll look for a motion to...
Motion to close.
Close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Application number six. Jody and Cyril McDermott, for a variation of section one-five-six dash twenty, seeking a variation, a variance for permission to add six-foot fence in front yard and retain shed. The property is located six-nine-six Route six N, Mahopac, and is tax map seventy-five point one dash one, one dash one dash eight. The code requires or allows four-foot fence for the front yard. What's provided is a six-foot fence, so a variance of two foot is being sought. And the code requires or allows ten foot for the shed. What's provided is three feet, so a variance of seven feet is being required. And then the rear shed is require, or the code requires ten-foot setback. Same thing, three-foot and seven-foot variance being sought. Good evening, you all gonna be speaking?
Hi, mostly may. I, I didn't know my husband, he might, but...
All right, just so I can remind you guys to speak into the microphone, but state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Jody McDermott, six ninety-six Route six N, Mahopac.
And you are?
Cyril McDermott, the same address.
Okay, raise your right hands. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, thank you. All right, bring us through your application. What's, what's going on here? You got some nasty dogs, neighborly dogs or something?
Yes, um, my birthday, actually, June eighteenth. My daughter was outside with my husband, um, he was looking, he had cut his hand and she wanted to go see and, you know, what, what was going on. He was working on, on his car, and then the, out of nowhere, the two neighbors' dogs just came into the yard with, right into the front yard. Ones of, you know, I, I have pictures, I think you probably see them, um, two very big, large breed dogs, aggressively, you know, growling, lunging, um, my daughter ran, thankfully they didn't chase her, and then my husband can tell you, he was, um, out there. I don't wanna miss something.
So it's the second time that that's...
You could pick the mic off of that stand, like, speak into it.
It's the second time that that happened, um, the first time they only had the one dog, and it was the, the big mastiff. Um, that came charging at my wife, I had to yell really loud to get it to stop, and then the neighbor came out to get it after hearing me yelling. And then this time, I, you know, my daughter came out to see me, what I was doing to the car, and I cut my hand, she wanted to see how I cut my hand. So I'm there showing her, and all of a sudden she, my back was facing the neighbors, and she was scared and started retreating, and I heard the growls, and they were on our property, right in the corner. Both dogs, uh, it's a pit bull now they have, and they have a big mastiff still.
I mean, it's not really an issue for this board, it's, it's more of a, a civil issue, would have to talk to the police about keeping their dogs at bay, especially a dangerous breed like that?
Well, the fence seems like the most, you know, uh, sure shot to keep my daughter safe.
I spoke to the husband many times about fixing the fence and her. I kept telling her, what you have up is down again, like numerous times I kept telling her, I would see it out my window, your fence is down.
Yeah, you have a picture of it, I've never seen that.
And every time, you know, apology, and then they put it back up, and it would, but that was the worst one. I don't, that, they were gone for a bit, and then they returned, and I, before they came back, I said, you know, make sure you fix your fence, it's not, you know, so they had many opportunities to fix this, but, um, yeah, he said he was gonna fix it, he was gonna put a wood fence, but, you know, never happened. So between that, being open too, and they were both sleeping when it occurred, the parents, um, I, it could have even been let out the front, so like, that's my concern. We don't know, they could have gotten out with that big giant breach in the back, or the little kids with the parents sleeping could have even opened the door. So the only thing to protect my daughter, or the front door, rather, is, is to put a fence, and since they're large dogs, like a forfeit fence wouldn't be appropriate, they could, they could definitely jump, uh, jump that. So I read like a seven-foot, but that's not, that would be something custom. Um, so we did find like a six-foot attractive, like black, I think aluminum fence for the front, and then the side was, um, like an open airy, I think galvanized steel, um, to run along for the side.
So at least it's, it's not opaque, you can see through it.
You could see through, yeah, it's, it will be clearly, um, it's just to protect, um...
And you're only going to this blue line? I didn't get a chance to get out and see your property, is there a driveway or something, or where do you guys park?
You could probably, um, yeah, there's a turnaround, so it would be before the turnaround.
No, but where do you guys park your cars?
In the driveway.
So the driveway is where? On the right side of the house?
You show them, you're better with like maps.
Oh, that's, okay. So that's the drive there, so you'd have a, a gate to get into this part, so this would be the black fence to this point?
Yeah, right in the front, on our grass.
Just grab, get the microphone.
I'm sorry. Right, right in the front, um, there's a turnaround that's paved, so it would be on the grass part, right up to the turnaround, and then we would have a gate across our driveway.
Two gates or one?
Um, maybe one for the, for the car, and then one for a person to go through as well. If, you know, you, if you're not taking a car through, at, at that point, you could get through.
So then this black fence, this solely would be from the front point of the house to that blue line and across, right?
Well, my wife was wanting to run the black fence just across the front portion, and on the sides, the galvanized mesh fence, up, up to the, the front.
And that would be six feet tall, with posts every, what, ten feet, or?
Um, every eight feet.
Eight feet?
Yes, sir.
Would that galvanized mesh hold back the dogs? That doesn't look like it would be...
Probably bite right through it.
Yeah, it's pretty, you know, pretty strong.
Oh, how high should a fence be for a large dog?
Yeah, that's what it says.
You'll want a fence at least six feet tall if you have a medium-sized dog with high energy levels, or a larger dog, for particularly larger aggressive dogs, a fence height of seven feet will usually be enough to contain them. I don't think you need to go that aggressive, they look like, they're a little older, but, um, we usually don't look lightly on, on fences in the front yards, that's why you come here, but...
Right.
Each, each case is judged on its own merits, and I think you made a great case for this with, with the dogs here. So, yeah, you can, you can go back to the podium.
And mostly the fences are solid that we're looking at.
Yeah, that we're concerned about, and the fact that this is an open decorative black fence, I think it's, it's a nice, uh, a nice look, that's not gonna kill the neighbors and, you know, the view of everybody, so... Rose, any questions or comments?
No, nothing.
Phil?
No questions, thank you.
Last chance.
Yeah, I always have a question. Have you thought about extending it, the, the black fence back instead of having the galvanized one? Is it just too cost prohibitive to do that?
I, I don't know, you, um...
I'll ask her in the middle.
Yeah, she's not sworn in, huh?
Yeah, we just swear.
That's what we had, um, looked at, but, you know, if there's...
I mean, I just think it would probably look a little better.
It'd look nicer.
And it would be more solid, but...
I mean, for, for resale value or down the road, he brings up a good point.
For your own dogs, when you get one, like, she probably...
Oh, we have two dogs, but we have two golden retrievers.
I have no other for, thank you.
Well, I mean, it doesn't matter what type it is, the variance is gonna be for the, for the size. There's your last question, thank you.
That's my last one?
None.
No questions.
All right, anybody in the public wish to speak on this application? I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At least in the public hearing, Paul.
All right, guys, thank you, we'll, uh, adjudicate now. At this point, no input from the public on any application?
Thank you.
As we adjudicate, so that portion of the meeting is closed. All right, uh, one and two, we held over already. On application number three, Canarriato, I'm half Italian, I'm, I'm...
A lot of Italians on this one.
Butcher in the last name here. Uh, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to grant.
Do I have a second?
Hold on.
Wait, with, with the, um, with the understanding that there'll be eight-foot-high abreviatey that stretches from the pool deck back to the end of the pool.
On the immediate neighbor's side.
On the neighbor's side, correct.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's granted. Um, new application is number four, Mucci, I'll look for a motion.
That was held over.
Held over. Oh, I'm sorry.
We held that over.
Application number five, Polcari.
Motion to grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And application number six, McDermott, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Granted. Okay, minutes from June twenty-seventh, I think, Rose, you had some comments, and they were corrected as...
As amended. Motion to grant, uh, motion to accept as amended.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
My mic is off.
All right, buddy.